The July 25th Madison City Council meeting to order and with that we have Pastor, Pastor Hudson with Restoration Church here to lead us in a prayer.
Good evening Mayor Finley and members of the council. Thank you so much for that opportunity to come and pray for you tonight. Let me pray. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for this day. This is the day God that you've made and may we rejoice and be glad in it. I thank you Lord God for this city that we call home, for the houses we live in, the jobs we have. Lord, I thank you for these men and women who served this city in this capacity and I pray for them tonight. I pray for their thought processes. I pray for the decisions that are made. I pray Lord God that each one is, is, is open and, and, and seeking to understand what are the best things that are needed for this city. Lord, I just pray that you by your spirit would just lead each one tonight, that every decision that is made, God, every issue that is brought to conclusion, that it is done so God in, in, in an orderly, decent, and in a way that's going to best serve the citizens of this city. Lord, I want to just give you all the glory, all the honor and all the praise for everything good that has taken place in this city. But Lord, most of all, I thank you for these men and women who dedicate their, their time and their efforts and their energies to be the best leaders that they possibly can. So Father, bless this time to tonight. Lead and guide everything that is said and done and let it be done for your glory and your glory only. In Jesus mighty name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor.
Would you please join, join in the pledge. Pledge and lead.
To the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic with which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Here.
Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Council President Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Yes.
Councilmember Seifert?
Here.
We've got a, a full, a full house tonight, so we'll move forward. Are there any changes to, to the printed agenda? If not, we'll move forward with, with what we have and I'll ask for approval minutes for the July 11th meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? If not, can I get the vote please?
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember, um, Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Denzine.
Motion passes. Next is presentation and awards and we have update on the city's com- comprehensive plan.
Good evening. Um, we're really, um, happy to be having Planning Week this week, all week. Um, and so we have, uh, two of our consultants here this evening to give you an update on the overall plan. Uh, Allison and Barbara here from Orion Planning and Design. I believe Allison's going to come up and have a, share some slides with you. Good evening council members. Happy to be back in Madison. It's good to see you all. I'm just going to take a few minutes of your time tonight and walk you through kind of where we're at and what our objectives are for this week, which we hope you'll be able to join us. Some of the activities we have planned. We're really excited. Um, I think it's going to be a constructive week of work here. So, um, you all might remember this slide if you participated in our workshop back in February. Uh, we were just at step one, um, the discovering of Madison, talking to our stakeholders, beginning to understand the, the roots of the community here. And in the months since then, we have been working through step two, which is the preparation of the community profile, um, conducting a level of analysis that really is going, going to serve as the baseline for the conversations we have with the public and stakeholder groups this week. So of course now we're here at step three, which is visiting, vis- visiting. We are visiting.
Yeah.
Uh, visioning and concept plan development. Um, and I'll kind of walk you through what our plans are. So this of course is what we accomplished in phase one. You were all a part of that. We had a very successful trip. And as part of that trip, uh, if you recall, we had an interactive mapping exercise that we engaged the public in during that week as well as following. Um, just a short summary, this information is all available on the project website and we'll be summarizing it in greater detail in our report out this Thursday evening. But, um, that map you see is a map of all of the feedback we received. We, we got over six hundred, um, independent, uh, feedback points on that map for assets and opportunities here in Madison. I would, uh, say that of those six hundred, about a third were assets, um, and two thirds were opportunities. And of course, that's opportunities for growth and change and maybe thinking about things in a different way, the needs of the community members. Um, so it was very informative and that's all going to feed into the process as we move forward. The analysis and profiling that we've spent the last few months compiling, uh, entailed, uh, two distinct, um, analytical reports, one of which is the market analysis that was conducted by Titusler Bice, one of our sub consultants, uh, looking at not only the housing market, but sort of economic development trends in the community. Um, and, and this is all of course, um, also available online for you to review. Not going to go into detail on, on the, um, numbers this evening, uh, in, in the interest of your time. But that market analysis is going to be really critical in terms of looking at future land use and development, um, through this comprehensive planning update. The other component, uh, that was conducted in the past few months is the mobility assessment. Uh, as you know, we updated traffic counts all around Madison to, uh, supplement those counts that were also done earlier this year. So we have a pretty robust accounting for current traffic levels and congestion, uh, through town. We've also conducted or are continuing to conduct an in-depth analysis of your bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and looking at how that intersects with the transportation network, congestion points, um, intersections. All of that feeds into again, looking at future land use and development over the next ten to twenty years. That has all been put forth, um, in addition to a review of existing conditions in your demographics, uh, and to the community profile. It is a, a meaty, but I hope readable sixty page or so document that's available on the project website and again, provides a snapshot of where Madison is at this time. So we can start to talk about where Madison would like to go in the future. Um, it will be a component of the plan, even though it's a standalone report right now. Think of it as an existing conditions chapter in your comprehensive plan to update that which was put in the twenty, two thousand and six plan and the twenty ten plan. So that's just an example of what you might see if you've had a chance to dig it in, the report. Um, as I mentioned, six hundred plus responses on that interactive map. Our project website has a function to allow people to sign up for our list serve. We've had over a hundred and fifty folks register since, uh, the website was launched in February. We've also had over ten thousand independent visits to the website in that same span of time. Um, so we can get some really neat analytics in terms of who we're engaging, um, and how they're engaging at any given point in this process. So now here we are, uh, Community Planning Week and we've got a pretty packed schedule. We started off today, um, visiting with, uh, some consolidated stakeholder groups to introduce the profile, talk through some of that market analysis and transportation analysis, get some preliminary feedback. That will continue on Wednesday as well. We have two more group meetings planned. But the crux of the week is really the visioning workshops where we're going to be interacting with the public, um, in a very interactive, uh, format. And we've got three planned, two of which happen tomorrow. We've got one, uh, in the early afternoon that we hope folks who might have evening plans can, can participate in with us. Uh, we've got a workshop planned out at Trash Panda Stadium in the club room. And then on Wednesday night, we'll be at the Insanity Complex in the VIP room. So trying to hit a couple of different venues, um, to gather different inputs. All of the sessions will be the same format. So as we've been telling people, they are welcome to come to one or all. They're going to hear me say the same thing three times if they decide to spend their week with us. Um, but they're, they're intended to look at, um, growth scenarios based on our analysis, based on the projected demographic, uh, not demogra- well, demographic shifts, but also population shifts in coming years. Looking at a low growth scenario for the near term, so the next five, five years out, uh, a high growth scenario for those same five years. And then a scenario in which we look forward all the way to that twenty forty-five horizon and, um, based on our projections and sort of the rationale that we're applying that growth scenario to looking at the population gain and kind of how to plan for the people and the jobs that are likely to come over the next twenty years. So we're going to do it in a maybe non-traditional format. You know, if you've all been through planning processes, you know the dots, you know the markers, you know the stickies. We've all been there. We've all done that. Um, we're going to use Legos, just, you know, switch things up. Um, we've been employing this method very successfully in a number of other communities in the region. And while it seems a little bit gamey, the benefit of the, having this Lego, uh, workshop format to work through scenarios is that A, we get to talk about, um, scalability of development type. There's a monetary value associated with that development type. So when we're talking about future scenarios, we're also talking about the financial impact those scenarios may have on the city, uh, your ability to pro- provide services, your bottom line. Because, I mean, that's really where the rubber meets the road when we think about future growth and development. Um, so the Legos, uh, are also really valuable in thinking about mixed use where it might be appropriate because we can layer, huh, a little bit more effectively than we can with dots and markers. Um, so it'll be a very interactive exercise. We'll run through scenarios with the public. We hope to make it fun. We hope to make it very informational. And then our team will be taking all of that feedback from those three workshops and, um, compiling it over the course of the week. So that on Thursday, uh, when we have our open house here in this room, it will be a drop-in format. So there will be no formal presentation, but we'll have stations where folks can engage with our team and check the progress, not only of kind of what we're working on in terms of future development, um, visioning, planning principles, but also hear the feedback or see the feedback really from those workshops to see where their peers are kind of coalescing around similar schemes, similar scenarios where people are on the same page or on different pages in terms of future development in Madison. So, uh, we'll be here again Thursday evening from five thirty to seven. And then we'll be at the downtown Madison Farmer's Market on Friday afternoon to do the same thing and have, uh, you know, just touch base with folks who might not be able to make it on Thursday night or throughout the week. So the, I mentioned the stakeholder meetings, uh, that are underway. The, the other arm of outreach that was launched last week is the community survey. And I think we talked about this back in February. And that's also going to be informing, maybe a little less specifically, the, the future development scenarios. But it's really going to help us highlight the, the vision and the community values that folks pri- want prioritized and feel are important. Um, so again, we're trying to create multiple avenues for feedback to help us see alignment and to help bring forth where people aren't aligned and we need to talk about that more. So that survey is on the project website now. We've sent links to all of our, um, contacts, our list serves, and it will remain open through, uh, the middle of August. And we're going to be, um, admin, marketing, I'm, we're going to be encouraging folks through the week to take it and, uh, pass it along to their, their peers and colleagues. So, uh, that's the, I should have put a QR code up there, I'm sorry. But that's the w- the survey address. Um, again, it's available on our project website. And when we finish with this week, we will be moving into a pretty rigorous plan drafting phase, uh, through the fall and early winter. So you'll see us back here with some results.
Very good.
Very good. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I have any other pre- presentations and awards? Is, uh, next to public comments, is there anyone like to address mayor and council? If not, we'll move into the consent agenda and finance committee report.
Okay. The, uh, finance committee met last week. Our primary topic on the agenda in addition to reviewing the items on the consent agenda was the upcoming budget cycle. Um, we have, Roger has sent out to all the department heads and the mayor's office, uh, proposed deadlines for getting information in. Uh, this year, we have moved back the deadlines by a couple of weeks, uh, so that we could build in a budget hearing this year, two weeks before we actually pass the budget in September. And, uh, we discussed our priorities. Uh, we discussed, uh, cer- certain economic indicators that of course are concerning to all of us in terms of our employees. Uh, we talked about inflation, the CPI and different things that, uh, make us want to focus on our employees in this budget cycle. And so that is definitely one of our emphasis, uh, this time. And then with respect to the consent agenda, um, and the bills to be paid, all things are in order. So I'd like to move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any, is there any discussion?
I just wanted to confirm our appropriation request still due a week from today as well? Or, or was that extended also? Or is, or they still do?
Those are still on the same schedule that they've always been, so that they can get to the mayor's office.
Gotcha. Great. Thank you.
Can, can I get the vote please?
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember-
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is presentation of reports, and we'll start with the mayor.
All right, and I'll start by asking for council approval of resolution number twenty twenty-two dash two oh five dash R, adopting the Division F Regional Mitigation Plan, five-year update dated May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, in fulfillment of the Planning and Updating Criteria of the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand. You've missed seeing Jeff Birdwell's face on TV, so he's here in person to give you a quick update on why we'd ask for your approval.
Good evening, council mayor. Uh, thank you for consideration. So, just in short, what this is, is it's the actual natural hazards mitigation plan for the whole region. So what, what is that? It's basically two things. It takes the county as a whole and it says, here's what your threats are, tornadoes, floods, earthquakes, so on and so forth. And then it takes mitigation activities and says, here's what we're going to do, here's the things that, if we get funding, that we're going to do to mitigate the loss of those hazards. Perfect example is community storm shelters. There may be some things, uh, some, uh, culvert and drainage issues that are brought up. Uh, when you get the time, you can actually look in the plan, and there is a section for the city of Madison where some stakeholders have identified some mitigation measures, if funding is available, that you can pursue to reduce the loss of those. So this is nothing new. Um, council, back in two thousand and sixteen, right after I came on board here, actually did the same thing. The, the only difference was it was in the county format. You, you basically adopted, you know, just the Madison County plan. So what is different now is, for whatever reason, the state and FEMA says, we want to go to a regional plan. So what they have done is they've done the same plan, and it includes, like, I think, eight or nine other counties, which makes sense because most of those counties, a- a- as a matter of fact, I'll say all the counties have the same threats. So really, all you're doing is taking the same threats, adding the mitigation activities, and in the end, my guess is, it's a whole lot less plans for FEMA to approve, rather than, what, thirty, thirty-three hundred counties across the country. You just reduce that by a significant number. So that's kind of what it is. Um, has to be done every, every five years. So here's the real reason why you need to do this. In order for the city, the jurisdiction, to be eligible for any future mitigation, flood or brick funding, you have to adopt a FEMA-approved natural hazards mitigation plan, which this just recently received FEMA approval. So we're asking for your approval of this.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? If not, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, district number one?
Yes, sir. I have for your approval today, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash two zero six dash R. And this assures a one-time lump sum payment for our retirees for the city of Madison. It's in the amount of two dollars a month, so that'd be twenty-four dollars a year for every year that they have been retired. And it's just a way to help our retirees, uh, combat inflation and, and costs of, uh, of goods and services being high. So, uh, HR recommends, HR committee recommends approval, and with that, I, uh, make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Terry, you going to walk through any of this now, or talk through any, any of it, or?
I think that's, it really is as simple as what she said.
Mm-hmm.
We did receive, um, a question about the total estimated cost for this lump sum payment. Could you, uh, answer that?
No, she did not mention it.
You mean the total cost for the city, or how much?
For the city.
The total cost of the city is estimated at seven one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. And the only thing I would like to add is, this is approved by the state legislature, and they set the rules, so we can't change anything about it. So they set the rules and we just agree to be a part of that or not. And so they set the amounts and, and all the guidelines, and who gets it, who doesn't. And they have to have retired by March, last March, in order to receive it.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions before I sit down? Okay. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
That's it. Can, can, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Great. And then, I, sorry, then I have just a couple of items I'd like to rec-, uh, announce. Tomorrow night, the Madison Police Citizen Advisory Committee is going to be having a meeting here, oh, I'm sorry, at the library. I mean, oh, it is going to be here, here. And I, I'm sure Karen's going to address it, but it's one of the topics that, that is, I'm very close to in wanting to help, and it's going to be a discussion on the opioid crisis. Um, several years ago, when I had an opioid forum, somebody died from an opioid drug death every five days. Now it's every seventy-two hours, and it's just, um, hitting everywhere in the world, literally hard. So I would just encourage any parents that are watching, that if you suspect anything, our police department is more than willing to come and just check out your home and make sure that everything is okay. Um, we just want to protect all of our residents as much as we can. Um, I also attended the launch twenty thirty-five meeting with councilmember Spears and Bartlett, and that was very informative, where we discussed the progress of the Singing River Trail. And then I also wanted to mention, in the finance, uh, consent agenda, just wanted to recognize Detective Sergeant Marcus Adams, who's worked for our police department for many, many years. Um, I think we're the same age, so that tells you about how many years he's worked, uh, for us, and just want to wish him well on his retirement. We, uh, ceremonially give our police officers their badge and their firearm, and we just want to wish him well, um, on this next chapter of his life. And then the last thing I'd like to mention is, I, I've had a constituent reach out to me with regard to starting an interfaith council in the city of Madison. And so I just wanted to reach out to anyone that may be watching online or here that would like to be, um, involved with that, to contact me, and just looking for an opportunity to, um, get all of our residents together that would like to just come and pray for Madison and our leaders and our world. Um, it's so needed these days. So any questions with that, let me know, and that's all I have.
Thank you. District number two.
Um, no, I think Mara covered it pretty well.
District number three? No business. District number five?
Hey, I have resolution twenty twenty-two dash two oh nine dash R, appointing, uh, Brian Kilgore and establishing the salary for the city attorney. As you'll recall, at our last meeting, we had authorized the mayor to negotiate a salary and to come back with a resolution, and he has successfully done that. And we have Brian Kilgore here this evening, and so I'd like to present this resolution and move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion?
Just want to say welcome.
Uh, thank you so much. I, I appreciate the confidence that y'all have, uh, shown to me in, in making me your city attorney. Uh, this is an, an amazing opportunity. Uh, I cannot express in words, uh, what an amazing place this is to, just like your motto, uh, to come to Madison, this community, and be a part of just a, a wonderful thing that's just, just growing. So I'm looking very forward to rolling up my sleeves, working with each and every one of you individually, and, uh, basically doing the hard work that y'all hired me to do. But, uh, before, I do want to point this out, uh, I want to also point out the hard work that your acting city attorney, Ms. Grimes, has done over the last couple of weeks. She's, uh, really stepped up, uh, you know, she, she had her, her job, you know, as a, as a prosecutor, but she came in and basically took over and, and, and really helping the transition here. So I just want to make sure, uh, before moving forward, that everybody recognizes this. The job that she's done. So thank you so much. I really do appreciate this opportunity.
Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome. Can, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Wa- welcome aboard. Uh, next, you got more?
Oh, no, that's fine.
District number six?
All right, yeah, Mara did a great job of selling the committee. No, it's excellent. Um, yeah, it is here tomorrow night at six-thirty. It is about opioid overdose and that sort of thing. I know it's a really tough subject, and it's, it's too bad that it's here, but it is. So the more we can learn about it, the more proactive we can be to stop this overdoses and, and help the people, so. Thank you, Mara.
Thank you, Karen.
Also, tomorrow morning, the beautification board is ha- holding their annual beautification awards. They're going to be at the Trash Panda Stadium, so it's nice that they're using the stadium for another, for another venue, and I think that's awesome. Um, and I just want to congratulate all the award winners this year. And I've already talked to our engineer, but I do want to publicly thank him for all the work, the progress that's happening on Hughes. So many people are just so excited to see the work going forward and, um, and the intersection of, uh, Eastview and Hughes is a priority, probably won't be done quite before school starts, but it is going to be done for the safety of the children, so I'm excited about that. Um, on a personal note, for y'all, I've been around for a while. My husband was diagnosed with cancer, stage four, last October. It's been a lot of ups and downs, but last Tuesday, he was able to go in and have surgery. They have removed a little bit of the colon that was still cancerous, and all other places are showing that there is no cancer. So that has been a, it's been a very traumatic, um, and there's no words for it. But I really want to thank everyone who has stepped forward and has been so kind to our family and the compassion that's been shown through this. It has just been so heartwarming, and I just want to thank everyone for all that y'all have done for my family and for your support. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Very good. District number seven?
Uh, only thing I've got is next week, I believe, if I'm tracking the dates right, uh, school starts back. So I imagine the school zones will be pretty active in the mornings and the afternoon. Everybody figure out everything they haven't been doing for the past three months. It'll be crazy for probably the first week, but, uh, be patient and, you know, watch the, watch the little youngins crossing the road, and, uh, please be mindful of the speed in the school zones, so. Other than that, that's it.
Very good. Uh, there's no board committing your ap- appointments tonight, there's no public hearings. Next is Department of Courts and Department of Engineering.
I got, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash two hundred dash R, authorizing a professional services agreement with Thane Associates for professional services for the design of a replacement of the box culvert on Brown's Ferry Road. Uh, that includes surveying, construction, design, uh, bid assistance permitting, uh, construction administration services not to exceed forty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion?
Would this help that area, um, flow a little bit more smoothly on Brown's Ferry, uh, with regard to traffic, having this box culvert? It, will it, we've had some issues there on Brown's Ferry.
Uh, this is more to address the safety concern of the proximity of the bridge abutment to the, to the road. Uh, we're try- trying to widen that out. We're going to go ahead and try to go ahead and give it, get it designed to accommodate future road widening and sidewalks there way in the future. Those aren't, there, there's no plans to widen it, there's no plan to add any sidewalks, no plans to acquire any right-of-way if we don't have to.
Right.
But just so if we do have those plans later, we don't have to go back and rip this thing out again.
Very good. I, and I know speeding has been an issue, too, along that stretch of road. So hopefully with the box culvert, it'll be just a safer area to drive.
Can, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is police.
I'm here for, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two, two twelve R. Um, unfortunately, in, in this job, sometimes officers suffer through traumas that they just can't really recover from, and unfortunately, one of our officers, um, has advised us that he's going to be resigning as a result. Uh, he's one of our canine officers, and he has asked that he could take his canine dog Ranger with him, and we've agreed to that. Uh, Ranger's a little older, uh, I know they say you can, you can't teach old dogs new tricks and all, but, uh, it's been my experience in the past that the older the dog is, the more difficult it is to attach him to an, a, a new handler when they've been with the same handler for so long, so.
Mm-hmm.
And we've asked that we could transfer custody from the city to, uh, to the officer.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Not, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, chief. Next, planning.
This is one item this evening, and it's just a first reading. This is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash one ninety-nine, and this is for vacation utility and drainage easement, um, at the corner, northeast corner of County Line and Production Avenue. There's two different parcels, and the easement, which is shaded there, um, divides the, the parcels currently. Um, those properties are being merged for, um, construction of a gas station. Uh, so we'll be back at your next meeting asking for you to approve this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Legal?
Um, we're asking the council to approve resolution twenty twenty-two, two oh three R, and it's authorizing the city to join the state of Alabama and other local governments, uh, as participants in the current and future opioid, opioid settlements. There were just two. One was April the first from Johnson and Johnson, and one was June second from McKesson. And as soon as we get this approval, this is one of the steps where we send them the signed agreements and can get any sort of, um, restitution from these companies.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Can, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.